I will call the Hastings Planning Commission to order. Today is Tuesday, May 26th. This is a regular meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of a minutes from our May 11th, 2015 meeting. Commissioners, do we have any clarifications, corrections? If there aren't any, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Moved by Commissioner Alpa to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dever. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Those are approved. All right, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. This is City of Hastings. This is City Code Amendment 2015-20, first-floor residential uses within the downtown core zoning district. Director Hensman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The planning commissioners, we have before us is a small code amendment affecting one block of area in downtown Hastings.
The property itself is the block area that's located between Tyler Street and the Canadian Pacific Railroad. On the north side of that, right now is what's generally called Block 1. It's the vacant block owned by Hedra. It has the, a small parking lot there that graphic arts utilizes. The south end of the block is the Red Rock Corridor parking lot and then a future park that's under construction. Those would be the two areas that would be affected. What would be happening is, under the downtown core zoning district presently, there's a restriction against first-floor residential along Second Street between Vermillion Street and what they term Bailey Street, which no longer intersects near the CP railroad. The thought behind that was, we want to be able to ensure a vital downtown area, a large pedestrian activity on the street front. And that's, that still takes place and that's still very important. When we get towards the eastern end of downtown, towards the railroad tracks, the, the difficulty comes in in attracting retail in those spaces. And in marketing that property over the past 20 years or so, we've, we've really had to push people to try to get retail down there. And the projects that we approved were never constructed. We looked at another project a couple of years ago that was mostly residential as well. What we're asked, what we're, have before us tonight is an amendment that would allow first-floor residential use on that one-block area. I'll note that the rest of downtown area along Second Street would remain as is, which would have no residential on the first floor. But it would open up the possibility on this block. And the reason behind this is specifically for a project that we may have coming forward on Block 1. You may be aware that the city council and Hedra have approved a potential sale to Art Space, which is a constructor of artist live-work housing. They would be constructing about 37 units on Block 1 adjacent to Second Street. The way that their plans have been detailed is it would be mostly residential. There would be a small commercial component on the corner of Tyler and Second Street, but as you go east along Second Street on the railroad tracks, it would be residential on the first floor, which would not be consistent with our present zoning code. So we're asking tonight for that amendment. The actual text itself is quite brief. It just adds that section within the code that would allow it between Tyler and the CP rail tracks. And that would be the limitation of it. As far as notification of the meeting, we did notify all the downtown building owners and have heard from a couple of them, more curiosity than anything else. Didn't hear any complaints, didn't hear any, hear any comments in support or not support of the changes itself. So I can stand for any questions. This officially is a public hearing and you may open that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. All right, this time we'll go ahead and we'll open the public hearing. Anyone of the public wish to speak at this time? Seeing no takers, we'll close the public hearing. All right, Commissioners, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you. Comments and questions on this one? Christopher Wallace.
No, I just have a question. The, we're talking about the north side. Block 1 is technically the north side.
Correct.
The south side, you said, is the Red Rock Corridor. Okay, so that is currently not available for parking or for building or for anything else that's already here.
Right, for the most part. I'll clarify by saying it would affect both sides of the street, the north side and the south side. On the south side, which we term Block 16, most of that is that new improved parking lot area just west of the depot. There is a smaller strip between Second Street and the parking lot that, that we own as well, and that's going to be turned into a park over the next year as part of the downtown riverfront renaissance. So that will be a, a city park.
So it sounds like we're losing all of that area for parking and a lot of our events that we have here in the summer utilize that space for parking and for, you know, events, showcase.
Sure.
Particularly the car shows. Have they, has anybody talked with them about that? I mean, I know they use that a little bit for that service.
Sure, sure. Haven't had much communication with them on that. Our intent to purchasing Block 1 has always been for redevelopment. We'd hope that it happened earlier than it has so far, but the long-term intent was never for that to be a parking lot.
Mr. Slaton.
Several years back, when there was a rule to put the apartment style there.
Mm-hmm.
And we're talking the same area, correct?
Correct.
All right. Those did not sell because of their proximity to the railroad, pretty much. Because who wants to buy a $300,000 condo next to the railroad tracks? That's why those more or less did not sell.
Yeah, I think it was also market conditions, too. It was, it was approved at the, right when the market crashed on that.
Yeah. And if we're going to go into a similar situation here, why do we think that may make it this time where it wouldn't last time with apartments in that area?
That's a fair point. The way that we've structured this agreement is similar to the way we structured the Sherman Agreement in 2005. And that is, it's a development agreement that they have to meet certain targets before they obtain ownership of the property. So Sherman never had ownership of the property. What we told them was, if you receive your approvals and you get your financing, we'll sell you the land. And we would have the same agreement for Art Space as well. So they would have to get their approvals and their financing in order to construct. In Sherman's stance, standpoint, they got the approvals, but they could not secure their financing because they could not meet their, their pre-sales goal that the bank had established for them. So no transaction took place.
Nothing took place. As a follow-up then, we're talking, what size building are they looking at here? If they're going to put housing on the first floor and...
It would be three to four stories. The, the height of buildings downtown is limited by the Finch Building, which is the tallest building downtown on the northeast corner of Second and Sibley. So nothing can be taller than that building.
Okay, so how many units are we talking at?
They've said between 30 and 40, 37 was the last I heard from them. So around that figure. I have not, we've not had any plans submitted officially for that. I've seen some schematics, but that's been the extent of it.
Okay, thank you. John, you mentioned that there'd be some commercial space in that. Is that, do you know, will that be more of a gallery type of space or do you know what they're looking at?
You know, I'm not exactly certain of that. That's a possibility that they have laid out, that that could be a gallery space. It could be maybe some other retail space. I'm not exactly certain what it would be at this point.
So a concern that I have is if, I think it's good to maintain that character of having commercial space on the first floor. I understand the difficulty with the railroad track. I think that does start to really change that downtown core feel. So my, my slight hesitation with this amendment is that we're, we're throwing that commercial out, that commercial aspect out with the bathwater in good faith that the current project at hand would be the one that would maintain a commercial space down there. Now if that project does not go through, then we're stuck with, well, we might just have ourselves a, a four-story apartment building sitting there. That's nothing more than apartments.
Sure.
That to me, almost, I wonder if there's some way to have more language, although everyone here knows I, I don't like to put more language into our ordinances, but that's just a concern that I'm, I'm weighing at this time. Christopher Wallace.
John, it seems to me, I remember, excuse me, and I could be wrong. It seems to me that wasn't Art Space also working with us on funding or donating money for the pavilion that they were, that was to be built there? We went to, we went to an Art Space sponsored event where they were explaining some of the, some of the uses of the, of the pavilion or the things like that. And I'm just wondering, is, is their being able to build in, build in-town their plan, what they want to do in any way tied with that type of donation or something like that?
Sure. Yeah, there's no, there's no connection between the pavilion project and Art Space. I'm not aware of any connection there at all.
Okay, well, do you remember we went to, it was...
Up at the Green Mill on the top?
Well, yeah, it was, it was the Schoolhouse Square.
Yeah, on the top, yeah. And I think that was more coincidental. I, I think that was about a year and a half ago where Art Space was in town for a visit and at the same time, there was a meeting about the pavilion project and they were in attendance for that.
Okay.
But it wasn't connected.
Okay, very good.
I believe they were in town for the Hudson project.
Hudson. Yep, that's what it was at the time when they were looking at that.
The Rotary Club threw that breakfast.
Yep, exactly. Yeah, and, and one thing also about the, some of the, the comments that Chair Estenson had, what this would be, would be a special use permit to allow commercial. So commercial would not be a residential. Residential would not be allowed as a right under this proposed language, but could be considered. And so as, in considering a special use permit to allow that, if that was to come forward in the future, you could set certain parameters and, and look at the, the situation and make a decision based upon that. It wouldn't allow it as a right.
John, can you go a little further into the mechanics of that? Because I know we've had special use permits before that have come forward and there have been small aspects of them that, that just didn't quite feel right, but we came down to more of the mechanics of the law that they, we kind of can't deny them that special use permit. So what would be the mechanics of setting those parameters when, if that time arises?
Sure. You know, with a special use permit, it is very difficult to deny it. You've allowed it, the purpose behind a special use permit is it's allowed under certain conditions. And so if the conditions were, if the proposed impact would be egregious enough that it would be in contrary to the purpose of the district, you know, we have a downtown district, it's, the purpose behind it is to have a mixed-use aspect, to have commercial, to have some residential units. If a case could be made that it would be detrimental to that, that could be a potential reason to deny a, a permit that would come forward on this in the future. But again, the threshold for denying a special use permit is, is more difficult, certainly.
I, I like that, I like the idea that you would potentially have not necessarily 100% commercial on a first floor. Obviously, that's why we're discussing this. Is there somewhere we could set some sort of percentage be the, be the criteria for that special use permit, that you have to meet?
Sure.
20% of that first floor has to be commercial space or whatever it would be?
That might be a possibility as well. Another thing that's unique about the situation here is the only properties that it affects are properties that are owned by the city and Hedra. So we could step out of our role as, as regulator on the zoning code and really set conditions upon the sale of property, which would accomplish the same thing. So as we go through and negotiate a potential sale with Art Space, we could, we could put within the sales language that it's more specific what we'd like to see down there. So that, that could be a possibility as well.
Commissioner Wallace.
It seems to me that in this particular situation, granting a special use permit to build residential on the first floor in that area pretty much dictates the way that that is going to be used for good. There's, unless another company later on is willing to come in and tear it down and build retail space, once it's a residential space, it really is not going to be any other space, barring expensive remodels.
Sure.
So it's not just for this project, it's for the downtown area as we go forward from this point.
So, John, if we, if we were to approve this as it stands tonight, then really refer, we're moving the discussion forward at least. But there are still mechanisms to where we can, where we can say, this isn't a fit for the downtown. It doesn't fit the character. I'm just making sure that I understand you correctly.
Yeah, mechanically, if you were to, to make a motion to recommend approval of this tonight, would go forward to the city council. If there's concerns that you have specifically about the Art Space project in particular, which certainly this would affect, we, I can, I could pass those along to the city council and Hedra as, when they're going through the negotiations on the property. And that could be done tonight, that could be done at, at a later point as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think definitely to, to bring up the aspect of the commercial space and what is that going to be, I'm thinking also though, from the planning perspective of while we wish Art Space the best of luck and they obviously are eager to come to our community, if that is to fall through, we've got to think about, okay, now what have we, what, what have we opened a Pandora's box on the other side of that for the next developer that may come in? That's more of what I'm concerned with and, and making sure that we put a little bit of thought process to that. Christopher Slaton.
Question occurs, what's driving this particular hearing tonight? Was the request through the city council, through staff, or through Art Space?
Sure, mostly through staff. Looking through some of the preliminary analysis of the Art Space application, noticed that there was a lot of first-floor residential. And looked at our code and said, well, this is not something that would be consistent with what we have in place. And looked at the difficulty that we've had over the years in trying to sell that property and trying to get a commercial aspect on Second Street. And thought that it would be something that I would support as a change and to see if it's something the planning commission and the council would ultimately support as well.
So in essence, they're saying that other art street projects around the country have first-floor residential?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I'm sure they do. I, I don't have a good handle on the number or how much. I remember seeing pictures of buildings, I mean, I'm trying to think, in St. Paul in particular, in Lower Town, they do have first-floor commercial. I, I think probably pretty much throughout, but in other areas that are not in the core like that is, I, I don't know.
Other commissioners, any further questions on that? If not, then a motion of some sort may be in order.
Nobody else is going to make a motion, then I'll make a motion. Or denial, because I don't think first-floor residential fits in the commercial district.
We have a motion to, not to approve, not to recommend approval of this amendment. Do we have a second of that motion? I'd second that. We have a second by Johnson. The motion is now on the floor. It's before us. Any discussion on that? The motion to, to not recommend approval of the amendment as presented. Christopher Wallace.
It occurs to me that in this particular case, we're talking about one very controlled area of the city. We're not making a citywide policy. And it seems that that end of the downtown is very underutilized and has been for years. And if we were going to go forward with something like this, this is actually the perfect spot to do it. Because it essentially abuts residential. I mean, there's, you know, there's a building in the way, but not a retail type of a building. There's an eight plus.
Railroad tracks.
So I'm just concerned by that, I want to make sure that we are getting commerce in. I want to know how much, I mean, to me, this seems like this can actually add to commerce coming into the city. It can certainly, I think, I think it has potential. And I think that since this, we're not as much regulators of this, as John said, really when it comes down to it, Hedra and the city council, as this is a sale, really could write in. I think that maybe it should be handled that way rather than completely just denying this and, and sticking with a sort of a traditional method going forward.
Christopher Slaton.
While I agree with everything you've just said, I also agree with the last statement before the motion, that a, once residential goes in there, you're never going to get business into that building. It's too costly. A redo is too costly for the next 50 years.
Yes, I made both those statements and I agree with both of the statements, but I don't know that, the fact that it can't change, I mean, were we to try to change it, we'd then be actually stepping in and regulating and changing regulation that we put in place. I don't know that that needs to. I mean, I, I would be much more concerned if it wasn't one very specific, I mean, this is almost like a test to see if this would work and we, we kind of have the perfect conditions for a beta test in front of us.
I think for this particular project, this is great. My concern is, is if this doesn't go through and then we have this new, this change in the code there, and then you could end up with a four-story apartment building there with no commercial at all. That's my concern on this. It's not tied specifically to the Art Space project, it's just a generic change in the co, zoning code. That's my issue with it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dever.
I tend to agree that, I, I don't think we should deny this. I think growth in the downtown zone is good, as I drew my little downtown map here and mapped out all the other areas that...
So that's what that is.
First floor, where first-floor residential is allowed, it's by my math, half of the downtown zone that it's already allowed in. And as we add this little section over here, all around it, it's already allowed on first and so I, I think we ought to prove it. I think there's enough catches down the road where we can address if it's a, an apartment building and we think that that's going to damage the downtown area because of its characteristics, we can deny the special use permit. We can come back and amend this code again later if we want to, take it back out.
Christopher Wallace.
I don't think that this doesn't say, yes, you can go in the building. It says, yes, you can apply for a special use permit. So I think we have some built in at that point if this, if the Art Space should falter, but I also still think that Hedra and the city have enough, as they own the property and can sell the property, that it's not simply out of our hands as a city. So that we, we could, should the Art Space falter, should this, should they not come in, a future developer, we also would have enough control that we can say, no, you are required to do this.
Right, but it makes it more difficult to do that.
Yes, yes, I agree with you.
All right, so the motion before us is to, to not recommend approval of the amendment as presented. Is there any further discussion? If there is no further discussion on that question, could we please take this by a roll?
Sure. Commissioner Slaton, let me, let me affirm as well that this is a motion for denial. So a aye vote is a support of denial of the recommendation.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Alpa.
Nay.
Okay. Commissioner Estenson.
Nay.
Commissioner Roloff.
Nay.
Commissioner Wallace.
Nay.
And Commissioner Dever.
Nay.
Okay, that vote fails, two ayes and five nays.
So that motion failing, now the floor would be open for another motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dever.
I'll make a motion that we approve, the amended city code, chapter 155 dot 31, first-floor residential in the downtown core district, as presented by staff.
We have a motion on the floor by Dever. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Roloff. Now we have a recommendation for approval before us. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. I think we'll take, they'll take this by, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The vote I have is 5 a, 2 nay with Slaton and Johnson in the nay vote. Is that correct?
Is that accurate?
Okay, all right.
That carries.
All right, thank you.
And then when does that go before?
That will go before the council to order a public hearing on June 1st, with the public hearing taking place June 15th.
Very good. All right, now we'll move on to next item on the agenda, which is other business.
Other business, well, we've been working on a couple of different items. The Art Space project is, is one that you're aware of here, that, where that is at present is, we will be, they're going to be applying for funding through Dakota County, which is integral to the project occurring. From the conversations with Dakota County, it sounds very likely they'll get it. If that's the case, I would imagine applications for the building itself would come through here probably the fall of this year with potential construction in 2016 on that project. Other projects out there with the Hudson project, we're, we're going to be scheduling a meeting shortly, trying to, with the city council and Hedra, to go over the final deal points of the project itself in anticipation of signing a purchase and development agreement on that. I think we've got the pro forma where we need it to be from the developer. We have a good idea of what the costs are going to be, good idea of, of how the project is going to be financed, and it's looking very good at this standpoint. So want to be able to share that with Hedra and the council. Ultimately, they're going to be, they'll need to approve a development agreement similar to what we described earlier, which would have certain conditions be met, including approval of their plans and proof of financing before the property would be transferred to them. And so we're going through that. So hopefully the plans will be before you, maybe summer of this year. I know they would like to get started this, this year still if they could. One of the things that's a little bit of a hang-up on there, at least an unknown, would be a lot of the financing that they're counting on is through historic tax credits and they need to go through their approvals at the state historic preservation office. And that timeframe's a little bit more difficult to try to determine, but I know that they have a architect, structural engineer that they've, that is on hand right now. They've been in the building a lot doing their drawings, so that continues on. They're eager to have a control of the building so that they can continue to work on that. So hopefully we'll have some plans before you this summer on it. The project itself, I don't think has changed since we looked at it. It would be a rehabilitation of the existing building itself with about 62 apartment units in there, two restaurant spaces, a banquet facility, some other retail space, some ground floor outfitter space adjacent to the trail area. And so that's what would be, what would be going forward on that project. So looking forward to getting that signed so that can move forward for construction. Another couple of things going on around town, we did meet with the planning committee of council about a week ago on a potential annexation along Highway 55 just west of Walmart. There's about six to eight acres that Alina Hospital is looking at purchasing to put up a 50,000 square foot medical office building. So we had an initial conversation with the planning committee. They were generally supportive of the annexation and so I think we're going to see that application through here shortly. The annexation application is not something that would come to planning commission itself, but the project itself, the, the building certainly would. And from talking to Alina, it sounds like this is something they want to do yet this year, so they'll probably be going on that very shortly. So we've got that project going on and a few other commercial projects under construction as you've seen around town and... as you've seen around town, and as far as the meeting goes, in two weeks, I'm, I don't have anything yet for that meeting, but we'll see what happens.
All right. Thank you, John. Commissioners, any other business from the commission?
Question, John, there on the, on the annexation. If we could keep this around for a year.
Sure.
Why would not Alina want to use the land directly across from the hospital, which is on the cornfield, it's not, it's more than the same thing you're saying.
Yeah.
The same order.
Sure, sure. I, I think they've got planned, other plans for that property, actually, and that they would be in the future using that for other things.
Alina has other plans with her?
Alina Regina, yeah.
Through their expansion in the hospital?
Yeah. I mean, they had a large, they had a large plan that they had developed about six, seven years ago, maybe longer than that, of the full development of that property. I don't think this clinic was part of that. So it, I guess it's a good thing that even though they've had the, even though they've had the sale to Alina, that there's still a large investment in Hastings. That's good.
Any other business from the other Commissioners? John, I have one thing. Our discussion tonight about the city code amendment, would you please, with the discussions with HEDRA and with City Council, would you please attach our minutes as far as that section is concerned in, in their entirety to that, so that, as you can see, we had a lot of really good discussion on that, and I'd like, I'd like them to see more than just how the, the vote came out on that.
Will do.
All right, if there's no other business, then I think a motion for adjournment would be in order.
Motion?
Motion by Wallace, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Slaton, all those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.